Could you please rise to honor our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignak?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have under minutes, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting on Wednesday, December 19th, 2012, motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Conway. Seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have memorials. John F. Beaton, Lowell High School cheerleading coach. We have Thomas Byrne, former teacher at the Butler and Bailey Schools. In August, Rodriguez, great-grandfather of Lowell School Committee member, Robert Gignak. If you please rise in a moment of silence and darken chambers. Next we have motions. First motion by Kim Scott, request the superintendent provide copies of all social studies, science, and allied arts curriculum, being followed by the all schools case rate, and provide recommendations for improvement and changes that will ensure consistency between all schools. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made this motion, I just wanted to make sure that we have a focus on our non-MCAS subjects like social studies, science, and arts. A decision was made a few years ago to add content literacy positions in the district, and some of the schools have done an excellent job with the position, integrating the state science and social studies standards. But some others still need some work to do, and we need to make sure that we have a standard curriculum that's being followed across all schools, that's easily transferable from school to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kim Scott, request the superintendent provide a link to the current school committee policy manual and all employee contracts online. Seconded by Mr. Leary. Ms. Scott.
This one's pretty self-explanatory. I'm just looking to have the links put on the website. I know Mr. Lang has the scans already to attach them, and I just really think they should be there in the interest of transparency for anyone that's looking for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kim Scott, request the superintendent report on the feasibility of setting up a YouTube education account for all of our schools and/or all other options for setting up an easily accessible video library for the district with tutorials and professional development videos that can be shared. Seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewich. Ms. Scott.
Again, this one's, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. We've had some discussions during our curriculum subcommittee meetings with Ms. Martin and Mr. Leary about ways that we can add videos onto the website for help with parents with homework, for tutoring for students, and also just to have a library for professional development and for teachers to be able to access. Really looking for suggestions from the administration on, you know, different tools that we can use to do that. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I was in contact with John Overton, the webmaster, and just asking about how our Intranet was coming. The website is adding a lot more documents, and they will be ongoing from the old site, and we're revamping all of that. But I talked more about the Intranet being the communications systems teacher-to-teacher and the professional development videotype ideas. So, the last, at the last meeting, I believe, Ms. Ross Sikewich had a video, and Ms. Scott had a videotype thing that will be done for each of the school websites. Those should be up and running fairly soon. I think at the beginning of next week, at least, the shell should be up. But that Intranet piece of us filming professional development, the last two research, two research studies, we had recently a curriculum okayed us to be video teachers in a couple of different forums. So, we're working on that development of that Intranet, which would be a passworded, internal professional development piece for teachers to be communicating, and also the big curriculum documents, which are huge documents for our regular website, those would be placed on that particular part of the website. So, we are looking at the internal runnings of that. Ms. Scott, but we'll keep you posted as those kind of types of training pieces are evolved. So, that's the latest we have to date, but I will keep you posted as we develop more so.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kim Scott and Kristen Ross Sikewich, request the superintendent invite all of the PTO groups in Lowell to a citywide PTO sandbox meeting. Purpose would be to share ideas that work to increase parent involvement and enrichment for children, and to come up with ideas to help build PTO involvement in underserved and underrepresented schools. Requiring no second. Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. In December, both myself and Ms. Scott toured a number of schools throughout the district, and we had a great opportunity to really get a sampling across the district of different initiatives that are going on in each of the schools comparatively across the district. You had a probably core, a strong core, membership to each of the PTOs, and each had their own sort of bent on fundraising. Each had their own set of supplies that they use for their fundraising initiatives and their school fairs and whatnot, and we thought it was just, you know, as an outcome of those visits, and seeing all of that in one week, we really saw that as an opportunity to bring all of these groups together to share ideas. And we saw that at, you know, just in our visits, even with Ms. Scott sharing ideas of what they do at the Pine Art School, with the PTO who is actively putting together baskets and raffles for their Christmas fair at the Green Alge. So, it was really nice to see that exchange of ideas, and I think it's a great opportunity for all of our parents to really come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott.
Just one more piece to that. There were also several schools that shared that they had issues with forming PTOs or finding chaperones for field trips. I think it would be good to invite, like, the parent liaisons to those schools to attend, so that we can maybe have some outreach or some help from other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Robert Gignak, request the superintendent report on the committee, to the committee, what impact the state budget cuts will have on our current FY13 budget. Seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Gignak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this motion is pretty straightforward, so I'm not gonna sit here and pontificate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignak. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Mr. Leary, request the superintendent provide a status update on the motion passed by the school committee regarding the reopening of the discussion with the Lowell Plan, Friends of Lowell High School, Lowell High School Administrative and Facility Staff, University of Massachusetts Lowell, Middlesex Community College City Administration, and other community parties as it relates to the future facility and budget needs of Lowell High School. Discussion would include, but not be limited to, updating science laboratories, classroom technology, and future student educational facility needs. Seconded by Ms. Gignak. Mr. Leary.
Just thank you, and I apologize, Mayor, for having you read the motion again, but you do it so well, so I really appreciate it. Very, you know, articulate.
You're welcome.
This is, we began this actually even earlier. We began this back in the actual winter of 2012, walking around with the Massachusetts School Building Authority about getting science labs. And then the mayor and I had a motion about science labs, I think, in the spring or early summer. This motion is a follow-up, because now the city is in the process of developing their citywide and downtown plan, and I think they have a pretty comprehensive study that the DPD has put in place, approximately 160 pages of a draft that they're actually bringing out to the neighborhoods and to the entire city, and which will ultimately be voted on by the council, I guess, before the winter of 2013 is over, so the next couple of months. They have a portion of it in their plan that speaks about schools, and it's a very nice presentation of what, where the city sees the schools and how they fit into the city organization. One of the areas, though, that they really don't address, which is, I think, is of the utmost importance, is the future of Lowell High School. And I think, as being the school department, we're the ones who need to sit down and bring that to the city. And there's a lot of aforementioned names. I think the entire community has to be a part of this discussion. I think the first part of the discussion, as we said back in the initial motions, were really, what do the students need? You know, I went to school in 1985, students needed something in 1985. These students, 2012, 2015, 2020, are gonna need different facility infrastructure to meet the needs of going to a higher university, going into the military, or actually into the workforce. So, we need to have that dialogue. We can all agree, I think the committee has, each and every one of us have articulated their position that we need updates in science labs. Before we just go into that one discussion, we should be looking at the entire facility, and then moving into what the academic should look like. We've done bits and pieces, the city has been a good partner in that thus far, but we need to have an overall master plan. And I think, because we're downtown, and because we're so, just really connected to UMass Lowell and Middlesex, that we should be involving them in that partnership, not only for potential funding resources, but also for making sure we're aligned. I think, as Brian Martin, I think, was one who coined it, or at least the one I've heard say it the most, you can go in Lowell from kindergarten all the way up to a PhD, and never leave the city of Lowell. So, we need to make sure we're tiring our partners, our parents, business groups, and I think now, because the city's putting their plan together and the council's about to weigh in on it, we need to really jumpstart this today. I thank you, and again, I apologize for bringing up the motion again, but I think we need to jump on it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Leary. The work that I've been doing with, I've met with the chancellor of the UMass Lowell, along with the president of the college, Carol Cowan, and we just had initial talks. I've been in contact with Jimmy Cook because the study, the prior study that was done about the future of Lowell High School. And in reading and the beginning of this plan, getting people together to work on this, it really, we're looking at twofold issue. The issue is, how do we get the high school up to speed in the area of science and other areas for this budget season, for the children now, and then, in fact, what does our plan for the future of Lowell High School? I mean, we can do upgrades as much as we want, but the original plan that was out about five years ago, to kind of look into that whole high school option for the future, is something we probably need to revisit. So, we'll put this on the front burner, and for the budget season, right now, you need to know what it takes to implement the curriculum upgrades that this committee has been standing behind and moved forward within the last year. So, that's gonna have to become part of our budget deliberations and our prioritizing. So, that is most definitely a timely piece of this motion, Mr. Leary, but for us to be prepared for the council is in our plan, so thank you for that.
Mr. Leary.
Just a quick follow-up. I think, I talked to the city manager, and I think, you know, he's not 100% aware of what we're talking about yet. He's got good bits and pieces. We need to have a sit-down with him and bring him into the picture, because the city is going to be the financial driver, so they must be involved from the get-go. I think we're gonna have a joint facility meeting in January or February with the city council. This will be one of the issues on the agenda, but we definitely need to have that discussion, really, in the month of January, start that, and initial discussions, and making sure the city is at the table as well. Thank you, though. I appreciate the follow-up, but I think the time is imperative.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. If people are interested in the overall master plan, there will be two sessions for the public to weigh in. One is on January 7th, and that's at Alumni Hall, University Avenue in Lowell. And then the second is Wednesday, January 9th, at the Lowell Senior Center, and both run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Next motion by Mr. Leary, request the superintendent report on the anticipated Health Trust Fund balance, as well as a portion and timing of the funds to be directed back to the school department. Seconded by Mr. Gignak. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. It's, this is, I guess, it's, the city council, I guess, you guys have been working on this information with the city, just for my colleagues. Essentially, prior to 2013, prior to going into the new insurance fund, we would be allocated a budget by the city. 25% of that was paid by the employees, 75% of that was paid by the school department. What we need to do is sit down with the city administration to see how much of that money which is sitting still in the trust fund is gonna be reallocated back to the schools. That discussion, I think, the city is still working on, because the claims are still being paid from those older losses, so the city probably won't have a good idea to probably sometime, really at the end of this fiscal year, maybe into the next fiscal year, depending how long the tail of medical claims are paid out. But I think at least we can begin the discussion with the city in terms of some of those monies that hopefully we would be able to anticipate getting back. Some of the questions that we need to ask are, in terms of the pension fund, I know the city's carrying a significant liability to city workers, and definitely to some of our workers. Do the teachers' pension fund of the city, do they contribute to the teachers' pension fund as well? If they do, then it's some type of a dialogue we have to have, is that part of how the city's gonna utilize the money. But I think the key is, we open up a dialogue, if there's any funds that can come from that trust fund money that we've already paid in, that we can get back and use on our own budget to help out with some of the shortfall of the monies that we've cut over the past several years, that would be great. Again, being aware of pension outstanding liabilities, if some portion of that is allocated to us, we will wanna make sure that we're contributing and paying our fair share, instead of having that portion go on the taxpayer. But at least it opens up the dialogue, and we can begin to take a look at it. So, I thank my colleagues for supporting this motion.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with this motion. I think it's excellent. I will say that, going back into May 2nd, I believe, May 2nd, I put on a, I put on a motion that was somewhat similar, and I asked about the amount of savings afforded. So, through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps if the superintendent could give us a quick update on that?
Madam Superintendent?
The actual savings for this year has not been reported. Mr. Lang and I do have a meeting with Mr. Lynch coming up to find out. It hasn't been repeated. We have not had that reported to us directly, but I can have that to you in FYI, within the next bit of time or by the next meeting. But that has not come back to us at this particular point. But we do have an upcoming meeting with Mr. Lynch.
You know, again, I certainly, I think Mr. Leary obviously rounded this off, and he was very eloquent in trying to figure out exactly the monies coming back, and I think this is, I think it's excellent. But I think, you know, we started this off, supposedly, up in, back in May, and I haven't heard anything on it, no report at all. Has anybody met at all with the city officials on that?
Well, Mr., I met with the city officials on different things, and Mr. Lee meets regularly with Mr. Moses on issues, but we haven't gotten a figure on this particular item.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next motion by Kristen Ross Sikewich and Kimberly Scott, request the superintendent provide a report on the age and efficiency of the heating systems at all schools, current system issues, whether or not there is a way for school staff to override the systems when needed, and the plans and timeline, which we will resolve any ongoing issues. I require a second. Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, heating in all of our schools have been an ongoing issue, as every school committee member can attest to. And, you know, in visits that myself and other committees had done in previous weeks, you know, you drive up to a school, and, you know, in the middle of a heating season, you'd have windows wide open, because the rooms were too hot. Now, in our own homes, we would not leave the heat raging and open all the windows. That's just, you're just blowing money right out the window. You know, and in other discussions with principals throughout the district, you know, a number of them will work on weekends, and/or teachers will come in and work on weekends with them, and, you know, you've got heat flowing, you know, at a high degree throughout the building, whereas that could, you know, the heated, those areas could be essentially shut down or temperature dropped to accommodate having nobody in the building. You know, and in some cases, principals had even requested the ability to have site control, where they would be able to go in through the computer system and be able to either remotely do that from their own home, if need be, or, you know, in their, at their desktop, in their office. So, you know, given the technology that we do have installed throughout the district, I would think that it would be possible to put some site control back to our principals and to our administrators in the schools.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Mr. Gignak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the superintendent. A few weeks ago, we hired a position to monitor the heating systems at all the schools. Has that position worked out well? I mean, I know there's still issues every single day at most of our schools. Is this, is this position working?
Mr. Lang?
Sure, thank you. The gentleman did come onboard two to three weeks or so ago, and he's getting up very quickly on the systems and the controls that are taking place in the buildings. This particular year, and I can't tell you it's gonna get better, like, next week. It's definitely gonna take a complete heating season to go through the, working through all the kinks in the new control system that was put into place last year. Emmeresco was part of the city's performance contracting initiative, installed new control systems in each of the buildings, that now can be electronically monitored from one location, and everyone's on the same platform. But this is really, last year was very mild, as far as the winter goes, and individual systems were being installed all throughout the winter. So, we didn't have all schools onboard at any one given time. Now, we at least have that, and we do have the ability from one location to pull up a particular school, particular rooms within a school, and see what the temperature is, adjust set points. If they have a faulty reading, sometimes the computer screen will say, you know, it's 72 degrees, but the school's reporting that people are freezing in that class. It could be a broken set point that someone has to go out and physically repair. So, really, over the course of this whole winter, all of the kinks are gonna get worked out of that new system. I will tell you, from viewing it myself, and from that gentleman coming onboard too, it's very easy to quickly, when someone does have a concern, go in and tell them what we're seeing on the screen, and either see if they agree or disagree. But there is still some work that needs to be done between the control system, the actual mechanics within the building, that'll tell a system to turn on, turn off, things of that sort. So, we really are still working through the kinks. But no, that gentleman has been very helpful, just in the two or three weeks that he's been onboard, acclimating himself to everything in our buildings, and picking up on some of those issues earlier in the morning, before the individual school staff come, because he can go in and actually see if a particular wing of a building is cold or hot, and make that adjustment, before staff actually make their way to the building.
Okay, thank you. Just to follow up, an issue I have with this heating problem that happens every single year is, if the heat in my house doesn't work, it's gonna get fixed within the next day or two. The fact that the heat is not working, or is working, you know, over time at certain schools for years and years, is unacceptable. And the fact that there's classrooms with the windows wide open, and then right next door, there's kids wearing jackets at their desk. It's, something needs to change, because, you know, it's good to have a guy looking at a computer screen saying, "Well, that's not working." Well, it's not gonna be working tomorrow either. We really need to address this stuff, and it's, you know, we talk about heating issues all the time. We talk about facility issues, and it just seems like it's just getting worse and worse. And we're putting money into this stuff to resolve these problems, and it just doesn't seem like anything's happening.
Ms. Scott.
I just wanted to take a minute to stress the urgency. You said that it could go out through the heating system, the whole winter, you're saying, to fix the heating system issues right now, the adjustments? The issue I have with that is that we have windows open next to locked doors. So, this is a climate-controlled building, the windows should be locked. So, in areas where it's like that, I think it needs to be a priority for it to be fixed now, and not later. I mean, you can't have ground-level windows, like I said, with the locked door with the buzzer next to it. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have reports of the superintendent. Annual report of the David J. McHugh Alternative Middle School Bridge Program. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. On your desk this evening, you each received the bound copy of the 2011, 2012 annual report, which is a culminating report of the happenings at the bridge program run in collaboration with Middlesex Community College. This report talks about the curriculum, the activities with young people, the funding, and all the aspects of this particular program that we have enjoyed as a partner for a number of years. I welcome any questions you may have about the program, and if anybody has anything they wanna bring to the front.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd just like to offer our thanks once again this year to Middlesex for the work they do in maintaining this program. As you look at the numbers, it's clear that this is an exceptional resource for students who may be struggling in other environments in our district, and it really does represent a huge opportunity for getting students back on track. They've done incredible work in our district over the years, and every year when we receive this report, it's just as impressive. So, just to say thank you to Middlesex, they've been an extraordinary partner in this endeavor, and certainly, moving forward, we try to keep pulling them in every which way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Martin. Seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have superintendent's parent advisory board update. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I had reported to you all earlier in the year, on November 7th, the fact that I was beginning a parent advisory board, and at the beginning of the year, I had asked each principal to recommend two people from each building, and who have been involved and would enjoy participating on a district-wide committee, and 15 parents from Lowell High School. And I just provided you with a report of what we learned, because I know that this committee cares very much about what parents think. There are some key themes that came out in my work with the parent group, which we are meeting quarterly, so probably around February, the end of January, February, we'll be having our next meeting. But I just wanted to tell you that that particular evening was facilitated by myself and Assistant Superintendent Diane Murphy and Claire Abrams, where we came together, we each, we spoke to the parents in general about what they thought the strengths of the district were, which they were very strong on what they liked about our schools, the sense of community, our teaching staff. They gave us lots of great positive feedback. At the same time, we asked about the concerns and what they think we should work on, and we had a very nice mix of parents from different backgrounds and different groups. And so, they gave us some really great feedback, and at that particular time in the meeting, I included the PowerPoint that has the printouts of what we said, but I was there, so I can just tell you what happened. We had, one meeting, one group was facilitated by Mrs. Abrams, the elementary school. I sat with middle school parents, and Mrs. Murphy sat with high school parents, and we talked about concerns. What were the common threads? And so, in talking about the common threads and the concerns in the elementary level, they were concerned about class size. They were concerned about other additional opportunities for their children, before-and-after-school type programs. They were pretty confident about curriculum and the study, the program of studies that we have to offer as a district, but they were looking for more offerings for their young people before and after school, and connections for organized type of activities after school. In the middle school level, again, they were overall quite happy with our program of studies and curriculum, but they really wanted more peer kind of activities, peer tutoring, peer homework, after-school, more than before-school, because our middle school starts so early, but more kind of after-school, organized type of things, and those were the common threads. At the high school, where they were quite happy with the activities that are offered, being sports and clubs, they were concerned about our reticent students, and so I know lots of the conversation with Mrs. Murphy was about how can we get kids who aren't involved, involved deeply with the, in the life of the school, because that's how you find the kids who may, in fact, have some kind of risk factors, by making sure that they have additional opportunities to engage. And so, that was lots of the conversation. They talked about communication being equal across the houses. They talked about just some developmental pieces. At our next meeting, we'd be happy to report that through Race to the Top, we were able to expand some after-school opportunities. You, as a committee, have been very supportive of the STEM initiative, so we are offering some science-type activities for middle school and high school students, but we really wanna look at what our parents looking for. Another movement that I've been able to make is to meet- for. Another movement that I've been able to make is to meet with the park department to see what we can really offer as a as more activities for our young people between the parks department and our summer school programs, well, how in fact we can come together. So those are some of the things that we discussed and worked on. There were no surprises. It was a very upbeat meeting, which was really happy for Mrs. Murphy, Ms. Abrams, and I. We had a lot of fun, a great group of people who have promised to come back. So we sent, you know, this report to them, thanking them, so they could, they got a copy of it, you know, with my my holiday message. And today, we sent this so they would know we'd be talking about their work. But having engaging parents who care about what we need to work on, but also are thinking that their children are getting quality educations, which we got with the parents who came, and we are hoping that we even have more participation next time. So I just wanted to keep you informed on these particular issues and concerns that our parent group had in our in our conversations. So I welcome any comments, questions at this time.
Conway, and then Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Superintendent, I I congratulate you on this report, and also Ms. Abrams and Ms. Murphy on the report. I think that when you take a look at it, there's no doubt what's extremely important is listening to what the parents have to say. And and it seems as though it was a very positive meeting, and we've been, obviously, in situations where things are not all that positive, and this is great to see a report like this. Some of the things that popped out at me, I'll just name a couple of them. The fact that the parents commented about the feeling of community in the in the schools, in the majority of the schools, and also the confidence in school safety. And I think that was, you know, not that that's something that we we stop trying to improve on. Obviously, we try to improve on it all the time. And I think the whole idea, too, I, you know, again, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but the other, one other point I wanted to bring out, and that's the last part of that report, when you were talking about that you've gone to the, you know, working with a group from the city parks department to work on expansions of summer school options. I think this is extremely important on all levels, because I think once you get students engaged, you know, this is this is the time that that students obviously can get themselves into trouble. And if we can channel them, we're doing positive things in the summer and after school, it's it's so it's so paramount. And again, I congratulate you on the report, and I think it's a it's a great direction that we're going in, you and your team on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
First of all, I want to also thank the your administration for sitting down with the parents and opening up this dialogue. I appreciate, I guess, a lot of the after-school programs have always been a challenge for us. I know we've worked with CTI and other, the YMCA, with some of the programs after school. I know we have some sport programs, Mr. Conway's motion that we discussed at the last meeting regarding putting a real plan together that might offer alternatives. So I think these are good areas, at least we're starting to discuss them. Two areas that I don't know if we discussed or if you have a plan for are the class sizes. And we're sitting in the second semester. I don't know what impact the large class sizes in the kindergarten and first grades are actually having at this point, but I think we need to address them in the next couple of meetings. Do we need additional tutors in those areas? Are there areas throughout the district that are falling behind? Or are we doing are we doing well? And how do we measure that? The second thing is the statement about inconsistency of communication within the high school. Where is that inconsistency? What are we doing well, and where are we not doing it well? And what are the action steps that the headmaster and his team are developing to address that? Because that's an ongoing issue, where you're in one house, everything is really great. We get great communication, great feedback, and you go to another house, and you're like, you're almost, it's, there's nothing there. You're like in an empty hall. So we know we have some great people out there. What are they doing that's working, and how can we ensure that that's completely across the board? I think it's a good beginning. I'd be looking forward to seeing the additional feedback in February when you meet, but also to see where these action steps are the areas that maybe the committee can get involved in terms of funding and making decisions to help you. I mean, I think, you know, it's nice to say recommendations, but sometimes maybe we need to say we need to spend money in a certain area to make something happen. So we're looking forward to some additional dialogue in the next month or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
I just wanted to for you to know, the we will continue the conversation that we've begun. But for the next meeting, I'm really looking for parents to give me feedback on issues, developmental issues they really think that their peers would like some guidance on. We have so much going on, especially with technology, Facebook, checking on on kids' accounts. So my next meeting is really looking at what do you think their fellow parents? The the really amazing part of this meeting is I was questioned on how many people did I invite and where were they? And so being in this business for a long time, I brought the name tags of everybody, so the forty people who hadn't come, their names were there. So they said, as parents, we really have to look into challenging each other to stand up and do what we need for our children. And, you know, just us being a few representing, you know, when you were called to this particular, as a matter of fact, Ms. Murphy and Ms. Abrams and I were so excited because they called it an honor to have been invited, which we were happy about. And and then when we said, when they they were really concerned, they said, then we really need to work with people who are in our communities to talk about how we can help to bring the school system forward. And, you know, for many years, working in public education, we do everything, but the most important work that we can do is with parents, because that's what matters and lasts, and that's what really impacts achievement and outcomes for young people. So the next time, I really want to talk to them about what they think we need and how we can spread the word of how important, especially at different levels of a child's life, parent involvement really matters for their outcomes in families, you know, even more than the students. So that's the next work we're going to do, Mr. Leary. So thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this report? It's standing a motion to accept and as a report of progress by Ms. Ross Sikwicz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have convention and conference requests. It's standing a motion to take three together. Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. It's standing a motion to approve. So moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. On the motion, Mr. Conway. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have communications. A thank-you note from Bartlett School Principal, Grace Way, regarding Councilor John Leahy's generosity in distributing a hardcover book to each second-grade student after he read aloud to the class at the high school. Motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have professional personnel. Members of the United Teachers Lowell hereby request to donate four sick leave days to Michael Capoto, Maury School custodian. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have civil service. The members of the SEIU Local Eight 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 Lowell School Clerks hereby request to donate ten sick days to Yvette Roke, a family resource center clerk. Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have adjournment. It's standing a motion, so moved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. We stand adjourned.